Well, the Water Pollution Control and Town Council Meeting to order for Tuesday, August 15th, 2017. This is a special meeting. It'll start at 7:07 PM. First we'll start with salute to the flag.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Roll call? Here.
Deputy Mayor Follin?
Here.
Councilor Angeloni?
Here.
Councilor Arman?
Here.
Councilor Candelora?
Here.
Councilor Diamond?
Here.
Councilor Manna?
Here.
Councilor Miller? Councilor Rose?
Here. Motion to approve the minutes for July 11th, 2017 Town Council Meeting.
So moved.
Second.
Any corrections, changes? Seeing none, roll call?
Mayor Judy?
Yes.
Deputy Mayor Follin?
Yes.
Councilor Angeloni?
Yes.
Councilor Arman?
Abstain.
Councilor Candelora?
Yes.
Councilor Diamond?
Yes.
Councilor Manna?
Yes.
Councilor Rose?
Yes.
Motion to approve the July 18th, 2017 Special Meeting of Town Council.
So moved.
Second.
Any corrections? Seeing none, roll call?
Mayor Judy?
Abstain.
Deputy Mayor Follin?
Yes.
Councilor Angeloni?
Yes.
Councilor Arman?
Abstain.
Councilor Candelora?
Yes.
Councilor Diamond?
Abstain.
Councilor Manna?
Yes.
Councilor Rose?
Yes.
Next we'll move into Water Pollution Control Authority Agenda. Correspondent citizen's statements. Seeing none, we'll move into unfinished business. Update, request to connect to Sanitary Sewers, 1565 Middletown Avenue, MAP 67, Lot 85, White Hollow, Middletown Avenue, Sanitary Sewer Extension.
Good evening. The last meeting in July, I had presented a preliminary report regarding the flow analysis of the projected flows and actual flows in the Route 17 Mill Town Avenue line that goes down to the Mansfield Drive pump station. Basic finding was, I think there was capacity for about 700 units in the line. We did have some infiltration inflow that took up some of the capacity in the line. But basically, where we left it was, there was an area off Hoxbo, Hollymar, Burn Cliff area with about 120 homes that was identified as a, basically, a reserve area. The question was, is that still viable? Should be whole capacity for it or not? I said I would check with East Shore District Health regarding that. There is a memo in the packet that you have for tonight, town manager left for you from Alex Nardi, East Shore. And basically, in a nutshell, he's saying that the soils in that area are generally areas of special concern for onsite subsurface sewage capacity for septic systems. Areas of special concern have rather difficult soils and require a more in-depth evaluation in engineer design, possibly pumping and the use of select fill to construct a septic system. And this is an area where he would support the extension of public sewers. Again, there are no plans for the extension of the sewers. When the original study was done, it was identified as a potential future area. Again, the request is to research the files and see what, have there been a lot of repairs or the like since the sewers went in? But again, that's Alex's, Alex Nardi's findings on that. Also, some questions were asked of the town attorney, and the town attorney's response is, was included in your agenda packet. There's a two-page findings. And also, in your handout tonight, I've given you copies of a couple sections of the ordinance, the White Hollow Middletown Avenue Sewer Ordinance, Sections 189 and 11, and 18912. They are referred to in the town attorney's findings. Maybe just to try to proceed from there and give you my take in terms of, I think the interpretation is that, basically, if you meet the certain criteria of Section 189-11, there's four criteria. With WPCA approval, you may connect to the sanitary sewers. The four items have been reduced to three because the DEP basically said they're not weighing in on this anymore. It's up to the municipality. Again, 189-11, item one, it's an existing, it's an existing lot with an existing building. 1565 meets that criteria. Item two, Director of East Shore determines that the existing onsite septic system is either non-reparable or the repairs are not feasible, and written documentation of that determination is provided by the director. Final determination as to repairability or the feasibility of repairs of an onsite system shall be made by the Water Pollution Control Authority. Final say is in your hands. Item three, the utilization of the facilities constructed to serve the White Hollow Middletown Avenue sewer service area by the lot will not interfere or preclude those lots within the primary and second sewer service area or reserve area from utilization of the sewer service area facilities or otherwise administered reserve capacity to a point that interferes with utilization of facilities by lots lying within the primary and secondary sewer service area or reserve area. The reserve area originally identified 65 properties along Route 17. And this is always the hard one. To date, about 25 years after the sewers have been put in, four lots along Route 17 that's connected to the sewers. The feasibility or viability of some of those lots ever connecting, I mean, they've been counted, but when you have to cross Route 17, which is a very, a state highway, the feasibility disappears on a lot of those. I can't say, you know, I can't predict the future, but I'm just saying that some of those are very difficult ones to ever connect in because it's also a deep line in areas of Route 17. So, in my opinion, 65 is a count, but most likely, we're not going to see anywhere near that. Again, we've had four in 25 years. Again, I'm throwing it out there that, and just like the Burn Cliff Hollymar area, East Shore was reported, you know, they like, you know, make provisions for sewers. The other factor that really enters into this is the feasibility of it. If, you know, if you have a problem here and a problem there, it's generally not feasible to extend the sewers in there. You need, you know, widespread problem to really require that to happen. And again, I can't predict the future. I'm just throwing that out there because that was part of the report that was done in the early 1990s, saying that there's some issues over there, you know, keep it reserved for it. But again, the difficult thing with a facilities plan is always trying to adapt and change, you know, as we go through time. I'm going to give you another example, and it was in the Section A area of town that goes to the Branford system. That originally, the original capacity that the town bought in Branford was like 1.2 million gallons a day. In 1996, when Branford did their treatment plan upgrade, we re-looked at the whole thing because we had to pay our proportion share on the cost of any expansion. We reduced our request from 1.2 million to 0.5 million in that facility.
So what do we do a day now, do you know?
Well, I'm giving you, this is the thing with sewers, because you can plan for the future.
Right.
The problem and the feasibility issue that crops up is, when sewers were originally put in the 70s and thereabouts, there was 90% funding from the state and the feds. There is no funding at this point. It's on the user.
We overprojected, though, what the user?
Well, we over, I mean, again, in the 70s and 80s, and, you know, a lot of those facility plans looked at sort of a worst-case scenario. When you're doing your initial planning, you do that. But then it becomes a reality check when it comes to funding.
So Kurt, does this have to cross the river, in other words, where the bridge is?
1565 would have to cross the river. I would anticipate, again, they would have to pump it over to there. They would probably connect something to the bridge or do a new bridge and connect it to that.
So, go ahead.
Again, one thing, that alone being an existing structure, there's some other issues that come up. They talked about doing an addition. Pat mentioned it in his, in his letter, that the ordinance is silent on any additions, that it would really be up to WPCA on a case-by-case basis to look at it. My, I think my feeling would be is, if you're not adding flow, an addition doesn't really have an impact. It's when you start adding flows that it would. There's also the issue of constructing another building. The way the ordinance is written, that does not allow, it's not for new construction. I mean, if that were to be considered, the way I'm reading it, the ordinance would have to be modified to allow something like that. There's no, I mean, and I'm throwing things out for consideration, flow limitations. I mean, there's, the concern, the true concern in the whole thing is maintaining capacity for the areas that we've designated originally in the White Hollow area, and then trying to hold something for the area two in the Burn Cliff Hollymar area. If you're looking at things like this, the old Mill Pond Tavern or potentially the vineyard across the street, it's not in the ordinance, but it may be something you want to consider is putting flow limitations on some of these things. There's not, this is a residential neighborhood, so I don't anticipate a lot of requests for connections, you know, into the sewer. There's not a commercial zone along there. But I'm just throwing those out for consideration.
And as you said, we've had four in the past 20 years, four hookups, since the initial development.
That's correct.
Okay.
And I think at this point, I'm trying to look, you know, there's nothing written up for an approval or consideration. It's really, I've been looking for direction from the council in terms of where to go, if you want me to pursue something further in terms of looking at the ordinance, possibilities, looking at possible motion.
I guess my question, I think, again, going across the river, you know, you have to redo that bridge, obviously, right? What would be the plan for crossing the river?
That has to be developed. I mean, the port?
Has that been done anywhere else?
You could do it, I mean, you could attach, it's a forest main, basically, you attach it to the bridge. You would have to heat it so, you know, have some, because you don't want it to freeze or make provision so it would drain back, so it doesn't freeze because it's not always flowing. Other than that, I mean, the pump station concept is...
You know, God forbid, what would happen, you know, you have that going into the river?
Yeah.
So what would be the protection for what you do?
Again, I think, we're really on the concept level at this point. They'd have to come back with any final plan for the WPCA approval. We're really not there yet. It really was started out as the original request and the initial direction of would the WPCA consider and potentially authorize the connection.
Does it make any sense to consider connection of the existing facilities but requiring onsite septic for any new structures?
That's a possibility. I think usually, usually when somebody connects one part of the property, they like to do the whole thing. I mean, so sometimes it's more feasible because you've done all the infrastructure and everything, and it doesn't take much to add another building. But that could be done. I mean, again, the way the ordinance written, is written, it's for existing structures. In order to consider anything else, we'd have to revisit the ordinance.
So based on what you're saying, doesn't it make sense to revisit the ordinance first? You know, come up with your recommendations for the ordinance before we go forward in fairness to another business that may come along?
Well, I think if we're going to look at that, then we should look at the what-ifs and then try to digest it, WPCA review, consider, and make sure that there's enough protections. Because the true protection, what we're trying to do is protect capacity for the upgrading properties that haven't connected. That, that's the intent behind the ordinance.
So there would be like a flow capacity limit, correct?
Yeah. I mean, and I think, you know, there's, I haven't got to, you know, I've been thinking about it and how to do it, but you may be able to put limitations on individual properties or put restrictions on the type, I mean, types of properties. It's a residential zone, you know, so it's basically houses, but again, we have the pre-existing Mill Pond Tavern, you know, whether that's used as a restaurant or banquet facility, it's been there for, you know, a lot of years. A vineyard that's allowed in the residential zone.
Who determines the amount? Is that from your office, you sure?
The amount of flow?
Yeah.
They would submit a projection, I'd review it. It's based upon standards. You know, square footage of the type of use generally, there's other factors. Look at similar facilities, what they discharge. But normally, they would submit it, I'd review it, see if it's reasonable.
The thing that saves the town is the water-saving technology that's been developed over the last...
Yeah, I mean, toilets...
Twenty years.
...what they use, it's on a five-gallon pledge, it's like one and a half gallons.
Right.
So there's a lot of reductions in that type of thing. But I'm throwing those out and, you know, based upon direction. If you'd like me to look at the ordinance, I could look at the ordinance in terms of really the restriction part. I mean, the issue, I, you know, think we'd be looking at is the idea of question of additions. I mean, Pat addressed it in his, in his letter, but we might want to strengthen that up. In any new construction, if we were to allow it, putting restrictions on that so that we don't utilize a whole bunch of capacity. And maybe limiting the number. I mean, I'd have to think about it a little bit, but again, the issue is flow capacity to make sure we maintain it for the upgrading properties. The, it's always hard, how far do you project? Because usually, a facility's plan is normally for a 20-year, and then you keep, you re-look. Again, that's where I just wonder about, my instinct tells me Burn Cliff Hollymar has probably not going to happen in 20, 25 years, just based upon the costs, considerations. Again, White Hollow area, we had widespread failures, you know, when the original sewers went in, they addressed, there were rampant problems and non-reparable problems. Again, I, I could look at the ordinance, if that's a, if you like me to, and then with the town attorney.
The ordinance had the criteria for which he had to fulfill, correct?
There's a criteria in there, and it was, you know, it's very specific, existing facilities, and when they met, you know, they had to meet the four criteria.
And so then they have met those criteria to hook up?
I'm reading it from the existing, from the existing facility, that's one thing.
But not a new, not a new...
But then the question, yeah, again, the question is an addition.
So that's really the question, then, is...
Well, an addition or a new facility, again, how do you control that so we don't, because we don't want to have connections in the sewer that utilize too much capacity and then causes long-term problems? Absolutely not.
But we can, we can limit flow, though?
Well, I think, you know, it's, it's an ordinance.
Yeah.
Don't want to be righted that way.
I see, I hear what you're saying, okay.
It currently does not do that. I'm just throwing it out there as one possible consideration. And I'm wide open to anything else. I'm just...
Kurt, has anybody, has anybody ever separated gray water from sewage?
Well...
Or is that too hard?
Yeah, I think, I think it'd be an issue trying to do that. I mean, because most everything, most everything in there is all water and...
So it seems like the consideration we've got to really wrestle with and make a decision on is salvaging what's been an abandoned property for a large part of the last decade and permitting it to continue to deteriorate versus using some of the capacity that's earmarked for residential development north of this particular project. Is that about it?
I would say so.
Not an easy choice. I don't know about everybody else. My inclination is watching that property deteriorate and not putting it to use and on the tax rolls is probably a much bigger risk than the risk of permitting a development that's being proposed with some use of the facilities that are adequate for this development. To counterbalance, and I think the thing we've got to guard against, is an abuse of the system that would impact the ability of the residential properties that are upstream, so to speak, from using the facilities if they're needed in the future. So, from my perspective, if we refashion the ordinance to permit a reasonable development while preserving sufficient capacity, then I'm inclined to go along with it.
I concur.
Will you also be able to get clarification on this, where it says peak capacity could be reached if all the homes identified decided to connect? When a property sells, the bank or mortgage company requires connection?
That's, that's what I wrote, correct?
Correct.
Yeah. Yeah, and that's what I'm, if everybody ties in, I gotta look at, look at it.
But as you're saying, like, many of the conditions are, if I understand you correctly, like, where the pipe is really deep, it would, it would necessitate, you know, an extra cost to connect, right?
Well, there's, there's areas of, it's 15 feet or more deep, the line in Route 17.
Right.
And if you have to, if you're on, especially if you're on the wrong side of the D, you've got to cross over and connect into that line, that's a very expensive proposition.
So would a bank mandate that somebody go through that expense in order to...
I would think in a case like that, that someone would be able to demonstrate it's not financially feasible to make that connection. And generally, in the White Hollow area, where the sewers, where the stubs are already in there to line, that's where the banks are all coming in, they're saying...
You got to connect.
Generally, you know, your sewer's there, you hook up, it's one less risk that we have on our line. And they come in, that's, that's how most of them get connected lately.
So Kurt, is our capacity the pipe size, the pump station, or what we have available in North Haven?
It's really all three.
Are all three exactly the same?
They're all limiting factors. Basically, the pump station picks up a bigger area.
Right.
Route 17 has a limitation on it, and that's pretty much what the ordinance was based upon, the pipe size. But we have a limitation, the pumps in Mansfield Drive, where everything flows to, and they take up Norfolk Center area as well.
So if everything north is hooked in, is the pump station still good?
Pump station's good. It's sized for everything.
And the flow in North Haven is good?
The flow in North Haven is good. We can't, I mean, where we have an issue is if we try to start, say, in the future, someone wanted to put a whole lot more water in that line going to North Haven, you know, we have a limitation with our agreement with North Haven, and the size, the downstream sides, pipes that feed into North Haven have limitations.
Did the original ordinance include Norfolk Center? I didn't think it included Norfolk Center, the original White Hollow sewer area.
Yeah, I mean, it lists the street, it's pretty much the streets coming down. It doesn't include the center.
Right, that was hooked on after.
Right.
Right. Did we change ordinance for that?
No. I mean, actually, we designate an area, a service area, including Norfolk Center, that could connect into that, into that facility. I have, I have a map, and it's the, basically, the commercial properties are in Norfolk Center. And it's limited by grade. We got the schools, they connect it in. And it's pretty much, for the most part, that's connected. There might be a couple properties, small properties, that aren't connected.
Sounds like you have to work on the ordinance.
All right. I mean, all right, again, more than happy to, I can take a stab at trying to, you know, grab something for your consideration that would impose adequate restrictions and provisions to protect the capacity, then, but also allow, you know, certain types of developments, limited developments to connect. Try to get back to you with that.
Thank you.
Thank you, Kurt.
Thank you.
Okay, moving on, scheduling of Special Water Pollution Control Authority meeting and a public hearing for sewer works operating budget and proposed user fee for fiscal year 2017, 2018.
Just for your information, that's the standard thing. Time-wise, we end up having to adopt the WPCA budget, the second meeting in September. We're still gathering information at this point from our intermunicipal clause, so that's why we just have to schedule that second meeting as a special WPCA meeting.
We have a suggested motion?
I'll make the motion that the North Branford Water Pollution Control Authority schedules a Special Water Pollution Control Authority meeting on Tuesday, September 19th, 2017, and further that the North Branford Water Pollution Control Authority, acting as a sewer authority for the town pursuant CGS 7-255, will hold a public hearing on Tuesday, September 19th, 2017, at 7:30 PM at North Branford Town Hall, 909 Fox and Road, for the purpose of receiving public input on the sewer works operating budget and the proposed sewer use fees for the 2017, 2018 fiscal year.
Second.
Need discussion? Roll call?
Mayor Judy?
Yes.
Deputy Mayor Follin?
Yes.
Councilor Angeloni?
Yes.
Councilor Arman?
Yes.
Councilor Candelora?
Yes.
Councilor Diamond?
Yes.
Councilor Manna?
Yes.
Councilor Rose?
Yes.
All right, next item is Water Pollution Control Authority application to connect proposed new commercial building at 27 Branford Road, MAP 2, Lot 13, to sanitary sewers.
Okay, this is the standard format when anybody's coming in to construct a new facility new facility that they want to connect into the sanitary sewers, you're required to get WPCA approval and pay a special connection fee based upon the use and the size of the proposed facility. In this case, 27 Branford Road, Roses Orchards, which will now be Roses Orchards and Roses Vineyard, they're proposing to construct a little under 4,000 square feet of commercial floor area as part of the building, and tie that into the sanitary sewers. There's capacity in that sanitary sewer line. Again, the biggest thing before you is computing of the special connection fee, it's basically $4,000 per unit, and they have four units, so it's a special connection fee of $16,000 that they would have to pay upfront, prior to issuance of a sewer connection fee, or sewer connection permit, to connect the property into the sanitary sewers. Everything's, it's pretty standard, there's a motion there, the only thing, on item two, second line, I say that shall require the owner to pay a special connection fee for four units, and the number five is in there, it should be the number four. The word is correct, it's just the number is incorrect. One other thing, just to throw out, this property came in, they request to be sub-metered their bakery and ice cream facility, because they, their water line, they also irrigate with, so we sub-metered the actual use of the building. Depending on if they connect this property, this building directly to the water line, or they tie it in back to their existing line that serves other parts of their property, they may have to sub-meter to that building. My intent was, once I know how they're hooking it up, whether I can use the water authority billing rate, or if they're trying to go the other way, I was gonna have them put a meter on there, and might have to modify the agreement that the WPCA made a number of years ago for that. And my intent would be to bring it back at, at that time, when I know exactly which way they're going. And it really, what it affects is billing for usage. I'm aware of it, the applicant is aware of it, but once, they have to make that determination with the water authority, which way is the best way for them to connect. So it's not included in the memo, but I'm just throwing it out there that I'm aware of it, and I would bring that back, once I knew which was the correct way to handle it. Other than that, there's a suggested motion on your second page, and I think it'd be a nice, nice addition to town.
So obviously, I have to recuse myself from voting on this, but I do have, I do have a question on this. What's the capacity on that end of town? I mean, if we're, you know, I'm just curious, like, how much room do we have in the road? How much room do we have in Branford?
We purchased half a million gallons of capacity, I think, we're right around 300,000 gallons a day. When we purchased it in 1996, I did analysis of who's tied in, who's connected, who's not connected, and we reserved capacity, like, for industrial property, I think a thousand gallons, a thousand gallons an acre, standard numbers, so, and the size line, it's an 18-inch line going, going through there, so.
So you're, if I recall correctly, you're saying initially, we had purchased capacity 1.2?
1.2 million.
1.2 million, and now we're, we purchased 500,000, and we're using 300,000 of that.
Right.
And a facility like Roses Vineyards would use maybe 1,000 gallons a day?
Not much.
Not, or under that?
Well, yeah, I mean.
Just for, I'm just trying to compare apples.
Because I know when I looked at the property, I looked at it as an industrial use, which is a higher use. And again, there's, the initial study looked at searing all the way to the Guilford Line, extending sewers out over there. Up into the Seahill Road, that was all, you know, looked at in the, in the early 70s. Well, that's, a town that want to buy something, they were never going to use, I mean, so far down the road, the decision was to go for a half a million gallons of capacity.
So one more question, then, so, when the initial study was done, the farm was zoned industrial, so you would have looked at the 50 acres with two acre industrial lots?
Well, I looked at industrial, there's a standard.
So that piece of property was a lot of the capacity?
Yeah, absolutely.
That was bigger than its actual uses?
Yeah, I mean, this use is a, is a pittance of.
Right.
What was sort of estimated for that, that property.
What does the average house use per day?
About 200 to 250 gallons.
Right. So your satisfied capacity's really not an issue?
Yeah, it's not an issue at that, at that point.
Is it possible to make this motion without reading the Magna Carta?
I think it just, you know, approved the motion as.
With the conditions one through four.
So moved.
Second.
Any discussion? Roll call.
Mayor Judy?
Yes.
Deputy Mayor Fawnan?
Yes.
Counselor Angeloni?
Yes.
Counselor Arman?
Yes.
Counselor Candelora?
Yes.
Counselor Diamond?
Yes.
Counselor Mina?
Yes.
Counselor Rose?
Recuse myself. Upstaying.
The next item on the agenda is Notchell Village Active Adult Community, 50 filed for a connection to sanitary sewers.
Okay, this is more of a heads-up at this point. This property and project came before the WPCA back in 2008, thereabouts, 2009, and actually, it was for about 250 age-restricted units, it was approved at that point, subject to some, some conditions, then the market, stock market did what it did, nothing really happened, and they've done some grading over there, done some preliminary work, but the applicant would like to come back with a revised proposal, different layout, different type billings, I think they're going to change the number of fillings a little bit, proposing to do more like townhouses, and they, they had sort of big boxes, more like apartments before. So they're, appear before plan zoning later this week, they'd like to be here before the WPCA, they're meeting in September, to sort of, just give you an overview of what they're proposing, and also, the bigger issue there is the sewer line that was approved to go to there, it was approved originally at a very deep depth, to try to extend out eastward to the town along Route 80, to leave provisions for that. So, and then they came back during this whole process, because of the cost considerations, we started looking at possibly raising it, what are the other possibilities that we could do, they could maybe possibly bring it up a little bit and leave provisions for a pump station. So I'm going to work with the, I'm working with the applicant's engineer, trying to look at some alternatives, hopefully trying to have some information on what the impacts of either those, either of those alternatives could be, and then have a discussion with the WPCA. And again, I'm just trying to get this thing going, so that there's, you know, you're aware of it, and it may take a little while to get through the process, and one thing may lead to, you know, further questions, but at least we can go through a methodical process on it. So, again, at this point, it's information, there's some background I gave you, but I think we have to sort of revisit the whole thing at this point.
Thank you. Under Water Pollution Control Authority, we have new business, nothing scheduled. Item number six, citizen statements and petitions under Water Pollution Control Authority. Seeing none, we'll move into the regular town council meeting, reports of committees, boards, and commissions, economic development commission.
Economic Development Commission met last Monday, post Potato Festival, and they discussed the large turnout they had for the, with the business welcome Thursday night before the festival. They met with Dennis Pannon, further discussions regarding website update and efficiency, and Mike, was there anything else that?
Yes, they also discussed a program that UConn has offered called First Impressions, which matches towns of similar size and economic indicators to exchange, if you will, for lack of a better description, that we send a delegation to another town, and they send a delegation to us, and we explore, and talk to people, and look at certain criterion factors, and gather information, and basically report back, and obviously, hence the name First Impressions, what do you get in terms of an economic development tool, when you come to the town, and it's your first impression, and they put a lot of information together, and UConn helps coordinate that. Economic Development Committee thinks it's a pretty good way to get out there and get another, another tool, they're very active and would like to pursue this, so they're investigating it right now, and working with UConn to see if we can find a match. So, looks, looks pretty good, looks pretty interesting.
Thank you. Park and Recreation?
The July meeting did not happen, they did not have a quorum, their next meeting is scheduled for next Tuesday, the 22nd, but I just want to, Mike, did you get any update on the email that I had sent to everyone regarding the contract with the Portables in town at the parks?
Yes, you know, sat with Lauren, talking with, with Lauren Monroe and Michelle on the contract, we're pulling the contract, Lauren is, was going to be here tonight, but I think she'll be on her way.
She's right there.
Oh, I'm sorry, I'm looking right past you, sorry about that, the front row. But, yeah, no, we're collaborating on that, because I think Lauren can speak to it, but she's done the due diligence in terms of knowing, in terms of recording what has been done, what hasn't been done. So we've held up payment, and we're reviewing that, and we'll be talking with the contractor about that.
Okay.
Police Commission?
Next meeting of the Police Commission is September 11th.
Fire Commission did not meet, didn't have a quorum. Board of Education, Town Council Communication Subcommittee?
No meeting.
Town Planning Goals Subcommittee?
No meeting.
Public Safety Commission's Committee?
No meeting.
Planning and Zoning Commission? Our representative's not here, council member's not here. East Shore Health District Department?
No meeting.
Next item's Town Manager Report, Underground Fuel Tank at Stanley T. Williams, update.
Right, so I put a memo together and some background information for you, this was an item that we discussed at the Communications Committee, involving the underground storage tank at Stanley T. Williams, very large tank, I think about 8,000 gallons, had some problems and is nearing the end of its life cycle, so in talking with Fran, who was also at the meeting and after the meeting, just kicking this around, a recommendation that it doesn't appear to be fiscally prudent to uncover, unearth, and dig up a large tank to take out, repair, put back in the ground, and this particular tank has a life cycle that ends December 31st, 2019, so would have to come out of the ground anyway. So Fran came up with the alternative, I think, to take the old tank that we have in the vault that used to be here at Town Hall, that's been sitting at Public Works, we took it out when we converted to natural gas, so it's been sitting there, and Fran had a plan at a lower cost or similar cost to put that vault in place, use that, hook that up, and use that instead of the, instead of repairing the tank or purchasing a new one, and just repurpose, and just put it in and connect it. So, at this point, you know, it's just food for thought, there's, it's a non-budgeted item, so there's no pressure, you know, it's just an idea that you could do this in Phase One, and it's late, it's in the agenda, later on in the agenda for contingency, for Phase One, it would cost about $4,200 or so for the crane to move the vault into place, and to put it and, and place it in order to get it hooked up and running, and then we can transfer the fuel and get that, and address Phase Two of actually digging up or actually pumping out the rest, whatever sludge is left in the tank, and then cleaning it, and cutting it up and carting it off. But, again, nothing says you can't just wait and hold on the whole thing, and we can do it for the next fiscal year, if you want to. However, I think it's a low-cost alternative to get this in place, and then we'll basically lower our liability in terms of not using any fuel in the tank, should something happen with that tank that's in the ground.
Was this cost was going to be split 50/50 with the Board of Ed and the town?
Can be, certainly.
I mean, we share the building, correct, and there's one fuel tank, one boiler for the whole building, right, and I, okay, but it's, they're not, they're not on zones, because I believe we did discuss that at our Communication Subcommittee meeting last month, is the splitting of the cost on it.
Question, do we have gas up there?
No.
We never got gas up there?
No.
Is there, there is a possibility, though, right, the gas is up that way, or no?
No.
If you remember, they came in, gas company came in about a year or two ago, they wanted us to pay.
Right.
Of course, installing the line.
Well, for ACES, too, they were going to go by ACES.
Yeah, because I was just, yeah, I was just thinking, we did with the boiler we're putting in, if we went to a dual burner, you know, we could have.
It's just the cost of getting the gas there, that was a problem.
Right, right, now, I remember, I mentioned that, okay.
So the condition of the tank in the ground now, it failed, so that's the reason for this, correct? So it?
It needs to have some more, at least $10,000 worth of work, I could keep it in the ground, but.
But it has to come out by December of 19 anyway.
Yeah, $2,000, yeah, it's a lot, a lot of work. The idea is that, right now, is to just set the thing there, use the oil in the tank, drain it down, and then, you know, I'm thinking it's going to be probably in January, and then just start fueling and doing it up. So that's why, that's why I was saying, let's run the tank down, but it's your choice, we can wait until next summer if you want.
So what's the advantage of either way, going, what would the direction be, what would be the advantages?
What do you mean?
Oh, doing, doing the transfer now versus waiting a year?
Just when January comes, we're going to be filling up the tank that we're going to be taken out of there.
Right, I hear what you're saying. How long does it take to go through that tank, then?
Bill Choate's trying to give me the numbers.
Okay.
There's probably eight to 10,000 gallons in the house, it's going to take us through December.
Are there weather issues involved with this?
I'm sorry?
There are weather issues involved with this, in January?
No, if we put the tank there, we have to be all set to hook it up.
He wants to do it now, while the, right, so it's ready.
Before we fill it up?
Let the oil drain out, you know, use up the oil in the boiler for this next, you know, the fall into the beginning of winter.
What would be the harm of waiting till April?
There's no harm at all.
Yeah, so the new tank that you would place, or you'd have to pour a slab and all that type of stuff?
No, it comes with slab, it's set for basic.
I see.
So it'll be stored in valve and piping.
Hmm, okay.
So we could still fill it up, and then at some point cut it off, and use the fuel up.
April, May, and June, we could do transfers, you know, within the budget, so, you know, it's probably a lot easier to do it then than try to go into contingency now.
Or actually, just, yeah, right, because it's unbudgeted, just wait and put it through the budget process, and end up doing it for the summer of 18, next year.
Yeah.
And that would be the whole project.
Yeah.
You would just present it as to, you have the option, if you want, if you feel it's urgent, and if you feel it's necessary to do it now, here's one way to do it, in terms of phases, or you can just wait till the next budget process.
I feel a lot better doing it through the budget process.
Yeah, because, and that's, that's, well, a valid point, because all we have at this point is Phase One, we don't have the full, and won't have the full numbers until you know, when a, when a company that we have to hire for cleaning the, the tank and taking the sludge out, I don't know what that costs. It's a ballpark, but it's an unknown, it's It's a ballpark, but it's an unknown. There's no, there's no detail to it. All we have are the, just the quotes on what it would be for Phase One and the cranes, or crane to bring it in, do it, so.
Any other councils having feeling?
Yeah, I agree. It's easier to.
Make it a budget item.
Right.
Yeah, and again, I.
But a necessary budget item.
It's, it can, it can hold, it can wait, you know, again, it's not a, I don't think, just to clarify, I have the documents in here. It's not a failing tank. It's just a tank that, what is the code, the electrode or the sensors or something, got to be replaced. And it, but it's an old, you know, it's an old tank, it's ended the life cycle.
What is the cost of that?
The worry is you keep filling it with eight gallons or 10,000 gallons, you know, anything can happen. So, you know, next summer, we're probably okay.
What would be the cost of replacing those electrodes, if we have to do it before that tank?
We have to take, we have to take it out by December of 2019.
Yeah, but, yes, we're hoping that we don't have to replace those soon-to-be-expired items. That's.
Well, that's what we're, that's what we, why we would do this.
Right.
But we can do that next summer, is what Fran is saying.
That's fine. We can hold it for the budget process for next year.
All right, moving on. Can, Kim?
Before you, before you move on, like, on Town Manager's Report, did you, Michael, did you, so you received, and maybe you guys did it when I was researching wineries in Napa. Did you receive a letter from the governor asking what our fund balance was?
Yes.
And did you share that with the council?
I haven't, no, I haven't shared that. Anthony put it together, sent it up, I think it was Thursday.
Okay, so, so I've seen some reports that, you know, some towns aren't answering that. And I've also seen, or also, you know, you guys know I talk to a lot of people up in Hartford. There's, the, you know, this, this one has nothing to do with the budget. The governor and the Democrats' plan up there is that a town like us shouldn't have $10 million in reserve. And if their plan goes forward, they're looking to hit us another $6 million to give to the big cities. Okay? So, in that request, Michael, I think I would like to say, you get a request from Hartford, run it by the Financial Board of the Town so that you have nine heads to think about, what's he doing? Why is he doing it? And maybe we won't answer it, like a lot of the towns aren't answering it, saying it's none of your business. So, that's all I'll say about that.
Next item's Community Events and Presentations. Recognition and Presentation of Proclamation and Retirement Plaque to Robert V. Hall, Library Director from 1976 to 2017. And I have a recognition here of service to the town of North Branford. This proclamation is presented in grateful appreciation to Robert V. Hall by the Town Council on behalf of the residents of North Branford as a testimonial to your contributions to our community. Whereas during his 41 years of service to the town of North Branford, Robert Hall has built a reputation as an intelligent, honest, dedicated, and compassionate library director. And whereas the employee of the town of North Branford, Robert Hall, served as library director for both Atwater and Smith Libraries. And whereas throughout his tenure as library director, he balanced his time and efforts in giving the best of his service to all library patients with the utmost focus in providing residents and non-residents alike with the best possible experience he could offer. And whereas Robert V. Hall has consistently displayed the highest degree of professionalism and dedication to the town of North Branford, and after more than forty, four decades on the job, he has decided to retire and spend time with his family and pursue other interests. Now therefore, the entire Town Council on behalf of the grateful residents of this community hereby tender to Robert V. Hall this proclamation extended to him our deepest appreciation for his distinguished service and his best wishes for continued good health and happiness in the future. Presented by the town, North Branford Town Council on this date, August 15th, 2017.
Say cheese curd. Thank you, Bob.
Branford's been a good town to look for. I've had a great run here. I've worked for a number of town councils and town managers. I appreciate the support that we've gotten over the years that have made us the library department that we are. I appreciate the professional staff that I've worked with in all the different departments. The library board members who, like the Town Council, serve without compensation to make the town better. And maybe last but most of all, the library staff I've worked with, many of whom have been at my side for 20 to 30 years. But thank you very much.
Thank you.
And next item on the agenda is Lauren Monroe, Presentation to Thank All the Volunteers and Everybody Who Has Supported the Corn and Potato Festival.
I really don't have a presentation, but I'd like to first thank the council for allowing the EDC and the festival for offering beer and wine at the business and the sponsor party. I think it went well. Michelle Provinger did a phenomenal job on decorating that evening. I think it held attendance a little bit, and hopefully it grows from there. So I want to thank you for your support on that. As well as I want to thank the council members that did volunteer throughout the whole weekend and gave their support to the festival. Well, thank you.
Next item, Citizen Statements, Petitions, and Correspondence.
Hi, my name is Lynn Reardon. I live at 33 Darrell Farm Road. I was understandably denied being put on tonight's agenda since it is already long and time was need, was need to be considered due to executive session this evening. I am however exercising my right to speak during citizen statements for clarification. I want you to know that during everything I do, I do not have a motive or an agenda. I am not seeking retribution, nor do I concern myself with past and present relationships, arguments, or vendettas. I work full-time as a radiation therapist caring for care and support patients. In my spare time, I organize fundraising events such as Matt's Mission 5K, Comedy at the Castle, Stand By Sue, and Miracle for Mikey. I am a mom whose son died on May 23rd, 2009. On that day, I was given an unrepayable gift by the North Branford Police Department, the North Branford Fire Department, Yale New Haven Hospital, the Board of Education, and our entire community. Everything I do, everything, is to show my gratitude. My goal is to help as many people as I can with passion, a positive attitude, and energy. The gift is the reason I established Matt's Mission Fund and the Food Pantry of North Branford. I am grateful for Ken McNamara, a now-retired officer, who went above and beyond the call of duty when he came to my house to inform us of Matt's accident. He urged us to get to the hospital as quickly as we could while the North Branford Fire Department was extricating my son from his car. I was present and in the room at 2:52 PM when Matt was declared dead. So many people within our community and beyond gave me the gift of time, the last few minutes I had with my son at Yale New Haven Hospital. I have learned so much. I believe that what is right is right, and what is wrong is wrong. It is wrong on many, many levels for our officers to be working in deplorable conditions. I asked to tour the North Branford Police Department to take pictures because I needed to see the department for myself. With passion, positivity, and boundless energy, as I most recently helped North Branford Dispatch, I will help the North Branford Police Department, whatever it takes. I have no problem forming a committee of volunteers, starting a GoFundMe page, or reporting the deplorable conditions to OSHA. What is wrong is wrong, and the issues at the North Branford PD need to be addressed and corrected with or without your support. Rose, you said at the last Town Council meeting, if officers need anything, all the Police Commission has to do is ask. That is easier said than done, considering the documentation I have and the years of spending freezes imposed by Town Council and our past and present town managers. There should not be a question as to who gave me a tour and my motive for taking pictures. That's quite sad. The real question should be, why this council and the councils before you have not established a plan for the North Branford Police Department? Why are Band-Aids continually being placed on gushing wounds of our community? It is time to stop kicking the can and to take action. No more excuses. I am seeking solutions. The time has come for transparency. I want a clarification so that all of you know where I stand. We should work on this project together as a community. Thank you.
My name is Victor Peter Andrea from North Branford. I FOied some stuff from the superintendent's office a couple days ago, and I just received it. It is my understanding that the recent superintendent requests payment for unsaved vacation time and was paid for the sum in the amount of $3,500. Through an FOI, I request it was provided information in supporting this. However, what is concerning to me, that while the superintendent's contract allows certain reimbursements, it is silent as the ability to reimburse for unsaved vacation time. Further, as a part of my information provided to me, there was a correspondence from the sitting chairman of the Board of Education approving the same result. Important to the questions that I understand that the Board of Education has no meetings in July. Also, despite requests, no minutes, no meetings were able to be provided to me upon my inquiry. Several of the Board of Education members claimed no knowledge and request to let it be known for an approval. Now I understand it is the position of this council that is that it is a BOE matter and should be taken up with that. However, if the BOE members are not being made aware of their actions of their chairperson and the superintendent, I ask whether it should be bypassed for the BOE to be, to a higher authority. I ask you to remember the Town Council previous meeting that had taken place, unliterally decisions being made from the superintendent, certain members of the board. I ask the Town Councils to recall September 6th, 2011, where the Town Council had reprimanded the superintendent for purchases without bids, Board of Education attempts to alter contracts with no meetings or votes. And here we are now, six years later, as a citizen, before the Town Council. Again, I ask for help, potential discovery of the exact same thing. I'm going to present and leave it with the clerk. The findings from Jismandi, basically saying, can the Board of Education go back into contracts without going into a vote? The general rule from the Board of Commission, at least no members of the town of North Branford takes action in aggregated and any aggregated response, Jismandi said. Any Town Council member has no authority unless they are sitting or voting. That's number one. That's in the files. I have, which is very disturbing, my response. I needed to add, this is from Don Wenicki. I needed to add that she was informed to request instructed to follow his directive of the superintendent. This is from Scott Schoonmaker, Gail. As you know, I have 4.5 days unsaved vacation time for 2016 and 2017 school year. The board has approved that I receive compensation for these days. Mind you, there's no minutes, there's no meetings, no board member knows. But yet, Phil Dohmeyer, North Branford Education Chairperson, authorizes the compensation of 4.5 days to the superintendent, only one signature. I have a copy of his check. So instead of getting 4.5 days, they wrote five days, because it was easier to round up, in compensation. So they gave him $3,590.48. I have a copy in this folder of Scott's contract. He's not entitled to any reimbursements of any vacation time or take, or any time off that he's got. No reimbursements. Here's a ruling from the FOI. It's a booklet. It says the FOIA essentially has two requirements. Meeting of public agencies must be held in the open. Number two, record all public agencies are subjected to closures and inspections by public at large. This is all here in the handouts. Then from the FOIA, their entire booklet. So I ask the Town Council to please look into this. I understand that the Board of Education matters, but if the town, the town chairperson and the superintendent are doing this with no actions of the board, authority having jurisdiction is the Town Council to oversee this, which was already brought up by the Town Council in 2011. Thank you.
Do you mind if I sit down?
Go ahead.
It is my understanding that this room has been equipped to automatically video and audio record any and all conversations at all times. It is my future, my further understanding that the rest of our building may be have, may also have been wired. All of the above may very well constitute an unlawful invasion of privacy, except for the public meetings and hearings such as this. The private groups using this room may not be aware that their proceedings are being watched and recorded. I am therefore compelled to ask the following questions. One, who decided to bug our Town Hall? Who authorized this project? Was council aware or made aware that our Town Hall was to be outfitted with these devices? What event prompted this action? Number two, who did the installation and how was this firm selected? Number three, other than recording public meetings and hearings, what other purpose would be served to have a security? Do we have a security problem? Number four, how much has this cost us, the taxpayers ask? Lastly, I note, with interest agenda, it is time, item number 15, where council intended to convene an executive session to discuss security devices and cameras at this Town Hall. Should not this discussion have been before ordering and installing this equipment? Thank you.
Tonya, I just need your name and address for the record.
Tonya McCosky, Parsonage Hill, Norfolk.
Thank you.
This is what you're looking for, we're two of your own age.
It's a good thing we got a good audiovisual helper tonight.
I just have one thing under Citizen Statements. To address concerns of Mr. Peter Andrea, I would like to request from the town manager if he could request from the Board of Ed the contracts for the last five years for the superintendent, Scott Schoonmaker, the direct, Business Director, Don Wenicki, Bruce Williams, the Technology Director, and Mike Auger is the Supervisor of Food Service, and Bill Choudy, Supervisor of Building and Grounds, and Kim Newbig. grounds, and Kim Newbig, the fiscal supervisor. These are all people who do not belong to a union, so they're not a part of a contract. They all have their separate contracts or work agreements. So if you could request those as part of the information that Mr. P. Andrea presented tonight.
And if I, if I could add, I'd like, I'd like all those things and, you know, possible discussion and action on the next agenda to address those and those concerns.
Any other citizen statements?
I just have one quick thing. On a lighter note, this Sunday at Bill Miller's, there's a company night, and I encourage everyone to try to attend. It's a fundraiser, it starts at 5:30. I believe 7:00 PM, there's a show that starts, it's twenty-five dollars per person, and it's for a great cause and, you know, it's got our community together, so everybody's not doing anything, let's go laugh, I think everybody needs one. Thank you.
Okay. Next item is resignations and appointments. First item is resignation of William Burgess from the Ethics Commission effective immediately.
Second.
Roll call.
Mayor Dudi.
Yes.
Deputy Mayor Fawnan.
Yes.
Councilor Angeloni.
Yes.
Councilor Arman.
Yes.
Councilor Candelora.
Yes.
Councilor Diamond.
Yes.
Councilor Manna.
Yes.
Councilor Rose.
Yes.
Next item is resignation of Philip J. Dollmeyer from the Pension Committee as of August 15, 2017.
So move.
Second.
Mayor Dudi.
Yes.
Deputy Mayor Fawnan.
Yes.
Councilor Angeloni.
Yes.
Councilor Arman.
Yes.
Councilor Candelora.
Yes.
Councilor Diamond.
Yes.
Councilor Manna.
Yes.
Councilor Rose.
Yes.
Next item is appointment of Colin Johnson to the Ethics Commission, term to expire 12/31/2018.
Sorry, so move.
Second.
Mayor Dudi.
Yes.
Deputy Mayor Fawnan.
Yes.
Councilor Angeloni.
Yes.
Councilor Arman.
Yes.
Councilor Candelora.
Yes.
Councilor Diamond.
Yes.
Councilor Manna.
Yes.
Councilor Rose.
Yes.
Next is appointment of Carl Bellbusty to the Ethics Commission, term to expire 12/31/2019.
Is there a bio here?
No, I didn't see it.
No, these are cleaning up the reappointments of the current members of the Ethics Committee.
They're currently on the Ethics Committee.
Oh, I see, okay.
He's currently on.
Okay.
Thank you. I'll move this appointment.
Second.
Mayor Dudi.
Yes.
Deputy Mayor Fawnan.
Yes.
Councilor Angeloni.
Yes.
Councilor Arman.
Yes.
Councilor Candelora.
Yes.
Councilor Diamond.
Yes.
Councilor Manna.
Yes.
Councilor Rose.
Yes.
Next item is appointment of Sherri Dolan to the Ethics Commission, term to expire 12/31/2019.
So move, she's another one that's currently on there.
Thank you. Second, I don't know if there was a second.
Mayor Dudi.
Yes.
Deputy Mayor Fawnan.
Yes.
Councilor Angeloni.
Yes.
Councilor Arman.
Yes.
Councilor Candelora.
Yes.
Councilor Diamond.
Yes.
Councilor Manna.
Yes.
Councilor Rose.
Yes.
Next item, appointment of Shawna Hauser, Haussler, to the Board of Education, term to expire 11/14/17.
I'm going to make a motion to table this. The reason this was on here is that there was correspondence that Phil Dollmeyer was resigning from the Board of Education and, but it did not get received by the town clerk's office in time because you need an original signature. So I would just like to table this and put it on to the September 3.
Okay, second to table.
So Phil has effectively not resigned yet, is that?
Well, the, the letter with his original signature has not been received. There was an email with a copy, and that, according to state statute, that is not valid. And so...
So technically, he's still the chairman of the Board of Education? Until the... Well, I mean, in other words, there's a meeting this week, is he technically the chairman?
Correct. Until, until the town clerk's office receives the letter with, the original letter with his signature, original signature. A copy is not allowed.
Yeah.
So he's got to come in and sign that?
Well, no, I mean, he...
He just has to resubmit another one.
They, they could submit it, whatever office has the letter can submit it to the town clerk's office. There's, there's a packet on your desk. There's been correspondence going back and forth between Scott's office and the town clerk's...
There's a lot of packet.
...on the Pension Committee?
That was, yes.
That was original.
That was original. Yes.
Rose has better recollection than I do. We did get a letter, but I don't recall if it was an original signature.
Right. But the town clerk received one with the original, so...
All right, so Shawna is tabled.
Right.
Okay.
And we have a motion and a second to table it. Roll call.
Mayor Dudi.
Yes.
Deputy Mayor Fawnan.
Yes.
Councilor Angeloni.
Yes.
Councilor Arman.
Yes.
Councilor Candelora.
Yes.
Councilor Diamond.
Yes.
Councilor Manna.
Yes.
Councilor Rose.
Yes.
Moving to unfinished business discussion in action, approval of proposed ordinance 2017-1, Chapter 40, entitled Fire Department.
That's not ready.
What, what's, what's not ready?
The final, I think there was a hang up on a few of the areas in terms of the language.
The whole fire box, the lockbox and...
Right. Well, we were dealing with this like, a year.
Not quite a year.
What's the problem?
The language isn't ready for us to accept. I mean, we, we didn't accept the first language that was proposed, so they haven't come back with new language yet for us, so it's still on the agenda until that happens.
Okey-dokey.
And next item is preliminary park concept and cost estimates for 1599 Fox and Road.
That's still on hold as well.
Yep. And since we don't have that, we can't really go forward, RFPQ for 1599 Fox and Road.
Well, we had talked, there is an item in your packet. I think that's how we, we held up on the whole preliminary park concept and cost estimates on 1599 to, to kind of circle back with this notion of, should we hold a public hearing? Should the council want to go through? Do we want to do a survey? You know, Carrie had put together a memo for me in terms of years, using Survey Monkey and questions, so it's in your packet, not that you need to take action on it tonight because the whole, there, in fact, there's a revised schedule timeline because it was based on having a meeting for August 8, having you look at the questions, and then, so now there's a revised timeline, but I think it would be helpful if you looked at those questions, if you want more questions, and look at a timeline where you, we were trying to combine a survey and the timing of a survey with a public hearing, obviously in a large venue like the auditorium at the school, and, and get the input of the public at large, and then try to gauge that and move forward based on that information.
Are one of those questions a mixed, mixed use?
Well, it, it says retail commercial space is one, housing, retail and housing on second floor, town park open space over...
So then that would be a mixed use?
Yeah.
You can conclude that as mixed use.
Yeah, retail with housing is a mixed use.
Okay.
Mike, I'm confused, why don't you have the signs under unfinished business? You know, the country signs? I thought that would be continued under unfinished business.
For the, for the signs?
Those, the welcome signs.
Yeah, just need more time with, with Carrie to get that, get those numbers...
Yeah, just because you do carry the other items, I was just curious why that wasn't on there.
We'll have that for, for the next meeting, and I know Carrie's got, I think she's gotten the last round of numbers for them. But if there's, if, you know, so take a look at, at this, and I propose that we, we bring it back to have you, you know, possibly take action on it at the September 5th and/or discuss the timeline if you don't like the timeline. But both the questions and, and the timeline.
Retail and housing on the second floor is mixed use.
Yeah, you're probably going to have to move the timeline back a little bit.
Well, you know, here's how it, you know, unfortunately, we, we get into, you know, the September and timelines, and whether that, maybe it's too compressed, I, I don't know, maybe you want to lengthen that out. But also realizing that as you move into, well, in the school, school calendar, it's a little, little tricky.
Does anybody have any problems with the questions, the survey questions?
No, I don't know, no. I mean, we need more time to look it over, I mean...
There's only two questions.
Say what?
There's only two questions on the survey.
Right, I mean...
Yeah, first one's, how do you think 1599 Fox and Road, former side of town hall, will be used? Now, would you like to see the town manager prep?
Sixty-three.
Couldn't there be one town park slash retail or open space slash retail?
I mean, I think, yeah, I mean, what we have been discussing was, that's, Marie touches on what I was thinking, is that, you know, we're looking at having some open space available for all of our options. So it doesn't, it's not included in this two questions.
So you want, like, retail commercial space slash open space?
Right.
Housing opens, so you want open space at every option?
Right. I mean, I, because that is what we're discussing now.
I don't know how open space or park would go with a, a commercial development, I haven't seen any around like that.
Well, that is what we were talking about all along, is having some, you know, open, open...
Dan, do you want to use the, you want to use the word green space to separate, you know, some kind of green space? I, I think people are trying to decide whether it should be, you know, open spaces, you know, traditional open space park, a vast open space.
Right, I hear.
Versus what you're trying to do with, you know, include a, some type of...
Why are we making it complicated? Why can't there be two questions?
Yeah.
Do you want it as open space? Do you want to sell it and let it be developed?
Right.
Why, I mean, you're just getting, you're, we're, we're making it complicated. It's going to be hard to answer all these questions. It's like, do you want to, do you want to sell it? Or do you want to keep it as a park? I mean, that's really the question. I mean, and, you know, I talked to Scott Small, what he presented to you at the EDC, he said he was doing layouts on it, and when you did the buildings, there was no room left for, he said, parking or open space. That's what he told me.
What layout?
So...
What layout, when?
One he was working on, trying to make it work.
Oh.
So, what did he tell you guys?
I don't know what you're referring to. I mean, all the, all the drawings that I've seen have included parking and have included open space.
You know, Scott did, yeah, Scott took the EDC through some, some renderings and some images and drawings that, that he had, and, and had been pretty, pretty creative in terms of, you know, recognizing the limitations of the site and, and trying to get our rules and regulations of parking and so forth, and you have to have a, sort of a stacked and tucked in, but he, he can make it in some circumstances, it can, it can work, it does have to be condensed and/or concentrated in terms of using the, using the hill and elevation to get something to work, but, you know, he, he had a, a way of stimulating thoughts and ideas, and I think that was very helpful for the EDC. But back to your question...
But again, it's two questions.
You know, I don't think we have to be overcomplicated.
Do you want to sell it? Or do you want to develop it? Or do you want to leave it a park?
Maybe I'm missing something. This, I don't know what this tool is at all, Survey Monkey, but how does it get disseminated? How do we know it's just town people that are getting this inquiry? How do we know the responses are just town residents? And how do we know we get to every town resident with this thing?
Well, yeah, I don't think we get to every, every town resident, but we would advertise in terms of a link, and Carrie's looking at evaluating the Survey Monkey and, and what, what options we have with that, and how sophisticated they would be and how targeted they would be, but...
So you publicize the availability of this survey through the Totucket Times or whatever?
Online, Totucket Times.
And on the town website, and people log in?
It's all anonymous, though, so you...
So I could live in East Haven and say, I think you ought to turn it into a carnalograph.
That's right.
Why don't we just do a public hearing?
Yeah.
Why are we making it so hard?
I mean, what's the legitimacy of this if anybody can respond to it? And how do we know the responses are getting more from town residents?
You don't.
It's just an idea. You know, that's all she threw it out as, an idea. But the only way you're going to know is whether you do a public hearing or, you know, I hate to see it, you know, or ballot question, but I don't think you could, I don't think it qualifies for a ballot question.
Yeah, I think we asked Lisa, and she said it doesn't qualify.
So I mean, you're, you're kind of limited as to how you get input from the public.
Well, the only way I'd be in favor of this is if the requirement for somebody in response required people to identify themselves by name and address, so that we knew we were dealing with town residents responding to this internet survey. But frankly, I, I think the most...
But even that, you can go online and, you know, it's easy to get...
I think that the best approach is a public hearing.
Right.
Might as well schedule it for a public hearing.
Yeah, let's just schedule it for a public hearing and get it over with.
Okay, I'll check with, on the side for the auditorium on availability and come back with some dates to select for next meeting, and then we'll do some advertising.
Thank you. All right, we'll move into item number 13, new business discussion in action, request to lift hiring freeze for custodian for the Park and Recreation Department.
Right, we had someone was in the position, and now Lauren is seeking to fill that, I think, I don't know if she wants to speak to the, I mean, they're juggling a lot up there and trying to get a secretary as well. We're in the process of narrowing that down, but things, they're shorthanded up there, and I think it's important that the place look nice and look clean, and obviously we have a community center that draws people in for the fitness and so forth, so the quest is before you, as your policy to approve that before it's filled.
So I know your original one, or one resigned, left. So you hired someone and that person's left?
That's ours, though, and the position is four because he has another job, so he's getting it through right now.
Okay. Okay. I'd like to make a motion that the North Branford Town Council hereby lifts the hiring freeze to allow the Park and Recreation Department to fill the position of custodian.
Second.
Just discussion. Would this be a position that we could feel like we do with the cleaning service, or is this something we need a full-time person to...
They're, they're not full-time, are they?
Or part-time, or whatever it is. Do we actually need someone on the payroll to do that?
It's not a benefit position, correct?
Correct. It's nineteen hours, so it's, they don't receive benefits, but I think because of the hours and the, because they're there midday.
Yeah, I was just curious.
Other questions, Anthony, I know past, the previous director, they had opted to try to do this opposed to doing the town custodian in the back of the work, because it was during the day to help set up breakdown and after hours, you know, it would make the day more productive and we designate what is under the day.
Thank you. Okay.
Somebody made a motion.
Yeah, I get it, and Dan seconded it.
Roll call.
Mayor Dudi.
Yes.
Deputy Mayor Fawnan.
Yes.
Councilor Angeloni.
Yes.
Councilor Arman.
Yes.
Councilor Candelora.
Yes.
Councilor Diamond.
Yes.
Councilor Rose.
Yes.
Next item, appointment of library director.
Yeah, unfortunately, no, we do not have that. Well, I've got to restart. I sent you all an email, and I haven't seen that before. Both, both pulled out, personal reasons.
Today they pulled, pulled out.
Yesterday and today.
Okay, next item is...
I'll restart, do the best I can, and I may, I'm toying with the idea, did, based on, I'm obviously going to meet with Bob and talk with Bob, but, you know, he's leaving, and I'm, I'm thinking potentially of, normally I have a date, fixed date, maybe it's got to be a position open until filled, kind of, kind of thing, you know, just keep, but anyway...
Let's take that recognition plaque back and tell him he can't...
Thought crossed my mind, but he's pretty adamant.
Okay, next item is Scott Shoemaker, Superintendent of Schools, her request for signing.
His request is here, recall said he could not make it for tonight. His request is here, but Paul said he could not make it for tonight and I don't know if you want to defer that or, or take action, it's up to you.
I'll table it.
Yeah, I would, I make.
I'll table it, I take it, yeah.
I think someone should be here from the board to answer any questions that we might have, so.
I'll move to table.
I'll second it.
Roll call.
Mayor Dudy.
Yes.
Deputy Mayor Fawnan.
Yes.
Councilor Angeloni.
Yes.
Councilor Arman.
Yes.
Councilor Candelora.
Yes.
Councilor Diamond.
Yes.
Councilor Manna.
Yes.
Councilor Rose.
Yes.
And next item is approval of collective bargaining agreement, one-year extension with the police union.
Yeah, that wasn't ready in time for that last meeting because it was a special meeting, so it's, it's here for you tonight. There's a prepared motion.
All right, the North Branford Town Council hereby approves a one-year contract extension to June thirtieth, twenty eighteen between the town of, the town of North Branford and AFSCME Union Local Four Eighty-four Police, in which all provisions of the current collective bargaining agreement will remain unchanged for the fiscal year twenty seventeen, twenty eighteen.
Second.
Discussion. Roll call.
Mayor Dudy.
Yes.
Deputy Mayor Fawnan.
Yes.
Councilor Angeloni.
Yes.
Councilor Arman.
Yes.
Councilor Candelora.
Yes.
Councilor Diamond.
Yes.
Councilor Manna.
Yes.
Councilor Rose.
Yes.
Next item is approval of bids, painting of Reynolds Beer's House.
Yeah, we opened bids, I think we're very competitive with respect to five responses ranging from twelve six, twelve thousand six hundred to thirty-six thousand. And there's a low bidder here for a total of fifteen thousand nine ninety-five MDF coatings for the Reynolds Beers. And this is the pot of money in terms of tourism that this would be paid out of to cover that, that bid, so. For your approval.
We have a suggested motion.
The North Branford Town Council hereby approves the bid results for the painting of the Reynolds Beer's House and awards a bid of twelve thousand six hundred with alternative number one of three thousand three ninety-five to repair and re-glaze windows. We told them fifteen thousand three hundred and ninety-five dollars to MDF Coatings LLC of East Haven, Connecticut.
Second.
Al, are these numbers real?
I know, they're such a.
Well, I was, I was thinking what question I was going to ask first. So how do you vet these, these contractors?
Yeah, Michelle has, I have to check with her in terms of the.
Like what was in the bid? Are they actually scraping the old paint or just painting over it?
Franny knows. They're scraping, right? Fran and Shannon or what? I thought you. Scraping? Scraping and painting.
And then what about any rotted wood or, you know, because you know they're, that, none of that?
Yeah, it broke.
So those will be add alternate or add ons or?
I don't know that they're going to be doing any repair work. I don't know how, you know, I, I don't.
How many, how many windows are in the bid spec for the three thousand three hundred to re-glaze?
To re-glaze.
You don't know?
How long is this good for if we do it?
Your painting job?
Yeah.
Is the average painting job ten years?
No, on an old building like that, I mean realistically, it's three. You know, that's all it is. On an old building like that, you know? But, you know, the town's going to get ten out of it. If you want to keep it from rotting, it should be every three to five.
Well, at this rate with, because it's tourism money, at fifteen thousand, we can at least get ten years if we did this painting and then one more painting in five years.
Well, we won't have to re-glaze in.
But that's probably bigger needs in the paint.
Has it been seconded?
It was.
Yeah, I think it was.
I mean, are there any roof leaks?
So just on that, the re-glazing of the windows, so is it, is it re-glazing or is it just repuddying?
I believe it's just repairing. I don't think it's.
Because I'm sure that house has old glass.
Does.
So we don't want to lose our old glass, you know, so just want to make sure that it's just like repuddying the windows.
Repuddying what's missing, I believe, because that's, again, it's the whole lead paint and whatever else is on it, it's old. That's why they chose not to sand it, just peel the loose paint off and prime it and then paint it.
Because we did work on that about eight years, nine years.
Yeah, aside, it's a big siding.
Maybe we should look at the.
I think the siding is for most parts not much rotten at all. Just maybe one, one window down the wall, I mean, basically that's bad, but for the most part it's pretty solid. I mean, there is peeling paint, not a lot.
And then the only thing, I mean, and, and again, you know, we always used to, you know, back in nineteen eighty-nine, we used to see all these things.
Well, that's what I was going to say, maybe we should look at the bid.
Do we have, I mean, is this guy lead certified too? Because where his bid is there and everyone else is a lot higher, the other contractors are going to be looking at this to, you know, if this guy makes one mistake, you know, and I mean, you know, maybe he's just hungry for the work. But, you know, that has to be done, especially, you know, the scraping and everything. They've got to plastic it off and it's a lot of work. And we can't hire him if he's, if he doesn't have that certification.
So maybe, maybe we should table this motion and ask for a copy of the bid and put this on our September meeting. I think I would just feel more comfortable knowing exactly what the bid requirements are.
Well, it sounds like we need something of a resume or something from this contract.
Right, from this contract.
In addition to the bid, we need qualifications and licenses.
I agree.
Yeah, and that might be in the bid too, as part of the bid spec.
Well, hopefully Michelle got all the licenses and certifications.
Well, that's, that's what I'm saying, yeah.
There's a local company right here, which I know a replica, I'm looking they have for the windows. It's probably a real deal.
Which one?
Number three.
Number three.
So I have to, I withdraw my motion.
And I withdraw my second. And I would like to make a motion to table it and request a copy of the bid and.
Related.
And all of the, you know, like the bedding that was done.
Okay, you want to, you want to see all five or just, just the top two or just that one?
Um.
I'd say the top three.
We're probably going to get the bottom two because the next, the next bid is only a couple hundred dollars more.
Yeah.
So probably want to look at both of them. If it turns out the lowest bid is unsatisfactory, we should have at least the next one that we can.
Right.
Look at as a viable.
So one and three?
No, one and, one and two.
When you get to three, you're getting pretty expensive. You're up to thirty thousand dollars.
Right.
So you should at least look at the first and second.
I think you should take that one as a comparison.
I would like to look at number three.
I didn't read them, I did all of them myself, so, but I mean that.
Take which one, Fran?
I would take the high one too and just see if there, maybe there's something that the other two are missing. I don't know, I, I didn't, I didn't read them, but it's one way to look into it. It's not like it's a lot of information.
Three and four are neck and neck if you do both painting and windows. There's no significant difference.
Yeah, and number four's windows are, are the cheapest of anybody.
Well, there's, there's over five thousand dollar difference between three and four.
Yeah, but I mean, the re-glazing.
Because one is deducting off their bid. It's interesting that number five bitted by window, but you don't know how many windows are.
Wait a minute, if I'm reading this correctly, number four is actually lower.
Right.
It's twenty-six five, less twenty-seven hundred.
Twenty-seven, right, correct.
If we don't do the windows.
Right.
So it's twenty-six five with the windows as opposed to number three, which is thirty thousand dollars from paint and windows.
All right, so Michael, you'll bring back one and two.
Sure.
Anybody want to see either four?
See one, two, three and four.
Yeah, one, two, three and four. And any and all information that we can get on these guys with their references.
Okay.
And move on. Next is the sale of one ninety-one.
Um, I was trying to get a motion and it wasn't seconded. Was it required?
To table, my motion was to table.
Oh, so then second.
I.
Oh, you did. All right, so then Anthony seconded it.
Roll call then.
Mayor Dudy.
Yes.
Deputy Mayor Fawnan.
Yes.
Councilor Angeloni.
Yes.
Councilor Arman.
Yes.
Councilor Candelora.
Yes.
Councilor Diamond.
Yes.
Councilor Manna.
Yes.
Councilor Rose.
Question. And Mike, give us a copy of the RFP to.
Next item is sale of one ninety-one Forest Road.
Did that, did we get, did that go out the bid or RFP?
Yes, it was, it was sent out as well. Again, in that set, two budding property owners got together, put together, submitted the bid. That's what's in their packet for one ninety-one.
Oh, I don't, I guess I, I must not have the whole thing then because I don't see any names here or what ended up happening.
You have the. Do you have this?
It was in one, yeah, it was, it was in a packet.
What, in what packet? On the table?
No, I saw it in, um.
I just have a short description and then a picture and then that's it.
Oh, sorry, I mean, you should have.
There's nothing else after that.
You should, you should have these two pages.
Yeah, okay.
You have the memo, the two pages and the, and then, and then, so what you're saying is you only got this?
Yes, that's all we have in our packet.
Send those down and make copies. Everybody, everybody missing that?
I don't have.
Yes.
All right, let me get a copy or. It's real short, I can just read it. Or do you want copies? You might have time to take the copies. I can circulate this, but essentially the bid went out and the results were, well, they, again, we bit it out, but we also made, you know, the response was Mark Celatano and Dave Newbig, which own either side of one ninety-one. So they put a bid together and proposed an amount of five thousand dollars, though this council set the minimal bid at eighteen thousand. So this is the company documentation in, in, that should have been part of your packet with a explanation as well.
Well, I think we have to get the minimum of what we paid.
Probably, it's a tiny, it's a tiny lot, I think, yeah, that's the one piece you did get. It's, it's less than a, less than a quarter acre or just about a point two, three acre, as you said, that issues, we, yeah, you, you put provisions that you didn't want building on it. You know, I think probably the only two that we were going to get interested in bidding and they came together and put together a bid. I've got no idea what they want to do with it, but except maybe subdivision.
What restriction did we put on it?
You didn't want to dwell, you didn't want to dwelling on it. You said you didn't want to have a, any, any, any.
No, what restriction did we put on it?
No building.
No building. And you said, and you said eighteen and no building.
Because that was what, when we agreed to sell it, we said that it was not a building lot. That's what they were trying to clear up. You know, so, so somewhere on the deed is a restriction that that is not a separate building lot?
Sounds, sounds undersized anyway.
It's a, it's a building lot. It's a building lot. It could be bought and built on.
Yeah, there was going to be a.
So we were going to have a deed restriction that said that piece was like, they were going to divide it up amongst each other. So is this deal, do we have a deed restriction?
Well, I think by the, I don't think you have a deal unless, but I think you, you make that because that's.
Well, we're not going to sell a building lot for five thousand dollars. We'll put it for sale in the paper as a building lot and see who, who bids it. You know, we're going to sell a little chunk of land that has a restriction that it's not a building lot for five thousand dollars or whatever it is. We only paid thirteen, so we're doing well here.
Where do we advertise it?
I mean, but Michael, we had this, am I, am I not here? Did we say that there had to be restricted, that it was not a building lot?
There was, yeah, there was a restriction on it.
So why, what are you saying? Why wouldn't we do that?
No, he's asking.
I'm asking you, is there a deed restriction that says it's not a building lot?
I haven't seen the deed. I don't think there's a restriction.
So I'm not voting to approve it until we see.
No, what, what, Michael, what he's, what he's saying is did we put it out?
As part of the bid.
Deed, we're going to file it with the town when we sell it as a deed restriction if it's not a building lot.
That's the way I understood it. You were going to put that restriction on before they say it.
Right.
So they bid it knowing that they could not build on it.
Okay, so where is this paperwork? Because remember, if it is not written down, it didn't happen.
Well, was it, did they submit a bid based on that?
Well, we don't know when it's said.
Again, did we see the RFP for this?
No.
And I don't know why, I don't know when that happened somehow in the last thirty years. They all came to the council before they went out and then we don't have to have discussions like this.
Are the sellers aware they can't build that?
Well, that's a question. So I move the table as.
There were, there were two, you know, you put a minimum bid of eighteen, you discussed this, you, you went through this process and decided that you didn't want a building or put a building on the lot. You didn't want to build a lot. And there was a lot of discussion about the fact that it is limited and the setback requirements and Carrie went through and provided the information in terms of, of the zoning and the acreage and so forth. So I felt it was, it was going to be part of, if you got to a point where you got a bid, you were going to negotiate with the, with the, with the seller about putting that restriction on there as part of the sale.
I, I thought it was going to be in the RFP, that they knew.
I mean, because, because they bid on, because I, I looked into this and I looked into it with East Shore Health. It, it's an approved building lot. It predates zoning. So what did they bid in? So you don't have a copy of the RFP?
They have no big nose what you bid in, but.
Not, not, not yet.
So then the only way I would approve.
So, so are we supposed to negotiate with them now? I mean, I'm okay with that.
No, 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 no. It'll be a sale on a restricted deed.
But there's no building.
Whoever draws up the title for the property.
There's, there's no, there's no urgency to get this.
No.
So, Michael, why don't I go back to Dave Newbig and tell him it's going to have a deed restriction prohibiting paint structure on this quarter acre lot? Because you want to buy.
Well, no, it can't be a separate lot. This lot needs to be combined with the land that he has or something like that. I mean, because who cares if he builds a bigger house because he's going to have a bigger piece of land now?
Fine.
Or puts a garage on it.
The two names.
What we wanted to eliminate and what his, his gripe was when he approached us about this was that they were too small, the one he has and this one were two small lots and you can't drive into one without going on the other. So, I mean, that's what they presented to us. So, so if this is combined with the lot that they have.
Fine.
They're going to split it. Newbig's taking half.
Okay, so.
Celatano's taking another half.
So that works two.
So it's not going to be a building lot anyways. So in, in the.
Right, but.
In the deed, it'll be split. I don't know how they're going to file it, but in the deed.
Okay, again though.
If, if the sale, yeah.
We approve the sale of an approved building lot.
What happens when they sell it or something happens?
Well, as long as they're splitting it in the deed, but I mean, somewhere there's got to be that restriction on the sale.
Yeah, before we approve it.
And, and I noticed there's trucks parked on that lot right now. Who's trucks are those?
I don't know, I don't think they're Newbig's. That's probably the other guy selling town halls. I don't know.
Well, it's our property though, right now.
No, 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 they're.
I thought it was.
Our property's in the middle. Our, I mean, yeah, yeah, it's, it's in the middle.
Oh, okay.
So then just explain one more thing to me. Are we getting five thousand or eighteen thousand?
Five thousand.
Five is what they bid.
They bid five.
If we accept. You say get your name, but it's the five thousand.
What, so we didn't have like a reserve on it?
We didn't.
Yeah, we had a reserve.
We had a minimum bid of eighteen.
And that's the only bid you got?
That's, that was the one and only.
Where, I didn't, I was curious, but where does that get advertised?
Probably goes to our, our website. I'm not sure where we advertise. I'll check with Michelle on that.
We're not saying right.
Yeah, I would really like to know where, where we advertise that.
That's the house they knocked down, that. That's the MDF lot.
Unless you want to approve it based on the lot being split between two owners or something.
I want to see.
Just clarify with the buyers what it is they want to do. Maybe by next month.
Yeah, okay.
Then tell them it's got to be split and made part of the budding lot on either side.
Tell them it's gotta be split and made part of the budding lot on either side.
On both sides.
Okay.
I'll be happy to reach out to the bidders and- They're gonna cut it in half if that's what Anthony do fine. And then it's gotta be made part of their budding lot so that we don't have an undersized lot split in half for whatever you- Sure. That's probably their intention, but we'll- I'll talk to them.
But you talked, is that right?
No, I haven't. No, they just submit- they just submitted.
Alright, I'll move the table.
Second.
Roll call.
Mayor Dooty?
Yes.
Deputy Mayor Juan?
Yes.
Council Angeloni?
Yes.
Council Arden?
Yes.
Council Candelaure?
Yes.
Council Diamond?
Yes.
Council Mano?
Yes.
Council Rose?
Yes.
Next item is future budget planning initiative.
Yeah, I think that was Council Rose's request that made to the agenda as a standing item and first order of business was, or first request I should say, was the request of the library director to put together scenarios, which Bob Hall did, and that is in your- your packet. But along that line, the same lines, we are exploring, I think it was the same Council Rose had asked about the ambulance paramedic service, so I'm looking at that, collecting information. Also looking at emergency, I mean, energy services and energy savings through performance contracting. And finally, one savings that is real is the H.D. Seeger rebid of the change of insurance carriers for the general liability workers' compensation resulting in 133,121 savings to the town for this fiscal year. So, I'm not sure where you wanna go, but the report is in there from- from Bob.
I just lost that page. What was the- so what are those restrictions? Is anybody on a-
I don't know which restriction.
The restrictions on the library?
It's page 76. That's where the report starts. Well, I- I don't think we have to do anything with it tonight, right? It was just starting to gather information so when we get to the budget season, we have information and we don't have to do all of this then in a limited timeframe. That was my understanding. Correct, Al?
Yep.
Yeah.
Just so we have something to look at in our two weeks when we have to come up with millions of dollars.
Okay, next item is appropriation transfers fiscal year 1617. Anthony's not here. We're gonna wait for him. Yeah, it's in there. That's page 88.
Okay, so obviously the biggest transfer from what it looks like on here is in the- is in the police department. I- I know Anthony's not here tonight, but if I read this correctly, there was 57,000 in full-time wages and then the corresponding pension in social security is 19025. And we split that into overtime and the first lease payment on the two new SUVs. And then also put some towards the gate on there.
It seems to go on with to the next page. Public Works has 73,000 dollars.
Oh, I- it's going the other way.
77, so-
Do we have to do this tonight or can we wait until Anthony comes- is at our next meeting? Just in case we have any questions.
I don't see why not. Okay.
Alright, move the table.
Why?
Second.
Talk about deplorable conditions and then you transfer 76,000 dollars out of the budget without repairing, painting or carpets or anything. I think that 76,000 would go a long way towards deplorable conditions.
I think so. There was a motion-
You know what I mean? Miss-
Say that again?
Liaison. As you transfer- you're transferring 76,000 dollars plus you transferred 30,000 dollars for tasers and everything else. So that's over 100,000 dollars. Do you think that 100,000 dollars could go better towards repairing some deplorable conditions in the police department? Well, why are we transferring all that money? That's my question.
We're cleaning- you know, we're cleaning up the 1617.
I- I know, Mike, but, you know, we have people here complaining about deplorable conditions. Yet we're transferring 100,000 dollars out. That's- that's really not right. Somebody should use some common sense and repair the conditions in the- in the department with the 100,000 dollars instead of blaming the town council for not acting properly.
I will mention that.
Yeah, you mentioned it. And if they have the problem, they could come see us. But I'm not in favor of that transfer.
I think it already happened.
Well, we repaired the gate?
We repaired the gate.
Yeah, it's already the gate.
Bought the cars.
Yeah.
Bought the cars.
How are these transfers staying in place before we even approve them? I mean, that's why it's here tonight to approve it.
Right. Well, then we just table it till the- to the next meeting and-
That- that's- the motion was made and seconded to table to the next meeting. It's not gonna change anything here, but at least we could probably get some answers to our question.
Roll call.
As far as-
I think Rose seconded.
I seconded.
Yeah.
I thought I did.
Marie seconded one. I know.
Well, Anthony and Marie.
Right.
When it came to that- when it comes to that gate, we never saw the final price or the final bid for what they actually constructed bidly. The last time we discussed the gate, we discussed, they were talking about all these different- the perimeter, the police station, we're talking about a huge difference in quotes. And then we do have a gate up, but I don't recall ever seeing the final bid for the gate that actually went up. Am I wrong about that?
So you can ask Anthony that question next meeting.
No, seriously.
Yeah, remember, cause Anthony had said they found two- he had found 200,000 dollars and we talked about doing a septic, the gate, and they answered. He had talked to the state.
Yeah, but we still never approved. We never saw the- there was never a bid. I never saw a bid for what they ended up putting up. I don't think I did.
I don't know, but there's a motion.
I- I think we should actually make a motion as a town council to make sure that the bids come to the town council.
Unless I'm incorrect. Al, do you remember?
Or- or those bids are voted on by the town council.
You would like a motion?
Yeah.
Well, first we have it on the floor.
There's a motion on the floor.
Let's- let's vote on this motion.
We're voting to nay, though?
Yes.
To table the appropriation transfers.
Mayor Dooty?
Yes.
Deputy Mayor Juan?
Yes.
Council Angeloni?
Yes.
Council Arden?
Yes.
Council Candelaure?
Yes.
Council Diamond?
Yes.
Council Mano?
Yes.
Council Rose?
Yes.
Alright, somebody wanna make a motion to-
Yes, I will make a motion. I will make a motion that all bids are given to the town council before they are submitted.
Seconded.
It's amended the agenda.
Oh, we can't do that, right?
We'll put it on the next agenda.
Please put it on the next agenda.
Save that one in your mind.
And really, all we'd be doing is going back to past practice. That's really all we'd be doing.
Well, it changes, you know, when administration changes, so you have to bring it back once in a while.
Gotta rein it in.
Alright, next item is contingency transfers.
Yeah, we can skip that. We're gonna hold that for next year.
Okay.
You have to make a motion to a-
No, let's just get rid of it. There's no point in continuing it until we talk about-
We have to remove it now.
But I'm just curious as to how we have such a large amount in contingency to start off with, because I thought we took money out of contingency during our budget process. I- we have almost a half a million dollars in contingency.
We added contingency dollars to the budget in anticipation of a contract. Yeah, we put money into it specifically because of the contract negotiations. And I don't remember the precise number.
But I thought we took 150,000 out for the insurance saving. We- we took that out on there. I just-
Well, you know, we need to-
Right.
We need any money.
Right.
So we'll just-
That's fine. We'll just-
We won't act on it.
There's nothing to act on on that.
Right. Tax refunds.
Does this say just these three, Mike?
Yeah.
Move to approve.
Second.
Final item is review of-
We have to go.
Okay.
Moving too fast here.
I know. I'm still thinking about that 100,000 dollars. Roll call.
Mayor Dooty?
Yes.
Deputy Mayor Juan?
Yes.
Council Angeloni?
Yes.
Council Arden?
Yes.
Council Candelaure?
Yes.
Council Diamond?
Yes.
Council Mano?
Yes.
Council Rose?
Yes.
Next item is review of FOI request.
This was the item, I think, that popped up on the special meeting on the 18th that council, it was agreed to add the item to the agenda. I put together a memo outlining the 18 FOIs that have come in. I had to revise. There were a couple others that came in, so trying to bring you up to speed on that. I'm not sure what direction or where you wanna go with that. It was a wealth of information, a lot of information that was put in the Dropbox in July to try and give you enough time to review that. So, again, I'd be happy to go through point by point, but I'm not sure how you wanna proceed.
Since we- since we have something else coming up for the September meeting, can we just table this and handle it all at the September meeting? So, I mean, we got- we got- we got some things in tonight that-
Right.
I didn't get a chance to look at yet. I don't think we're gonna have enough time to basically go through everything and discuss it. And I don't think we have a large agenda list for September.
Few tabled items, but, yeah, it is what it is. I mean, you're prerogative as a- as a council to decide how you wanna proceed and direct whatever information you want additionally. I mean, if there's 18 in here or some, I- I just don't know that there's any further deliberation you need, but there may be of the 18 that you want further information.
I mean, what- what- what's here for our feedback? You know, I mean, there-
Well, I mean, if you take- let me just dive in. If you- if you take, I mean, first of all, we can, item one is the fire hose. So, if you peel apart that process, right, we went through looking at fire hose, putting on a placeholder for- for that item and trying to get it in under the gun of June 30th for the fiscal year and under contingency.
Okay.
Well, it didn't pan out because the chief couldn't get a- couldn't find a contract. The state discontinued putting out state contracts for hose. So, he wasn't able to find a contract nor through the council of governments or any other agency to find an opportunity to piggyback on fire hose. So, that moved us into the next fiscal year. So that opportunity or that window closed and he's since bid it out. We've opened up those bids and he's reviewing them, but he wants to go to his commission to review the bid on hose. And that would have to come full circle back to this town council for a contingency within this current budget. So you really reset and redo the whole process you did before on- on purchase of fire hose. I don't know that you need, maybe you do. We had originally tried to schedule a meeting with- joint meeting with the fire commission. Whether you still want to have that or not, I'm not sure, to get further insight or just let the commission look at the bids, come back with a recommendation, bring to the town council and say how much they need and how much they need to purchase for hose. I don't know if you want, you know, anything added to that process.
I mean, peeling back, as you say, what I see all in here, it seems more about policy, procedure, charter, following that course. That's what I said. I said that that night and I still believe it. Look at every single one of these. Charter's a wonderful document.
Yeah, I- I don't see anywhere where we're not following policy or charter. And that's why we're here to discuss. Second item on, it was actually, it was- is really about the scoreboard sign. You know, I got into that and two things- two things there. And you've- hopefully you've had a chance to read it and I have some recommendations there. You know, subcommittee- sub- communications committee looked into it. I mean, met with Scott, talked about that. He went off a state bid and Hinding was the one that provided the information that they were authorized to do that. Well, not exactly, you know? So, the state DAS was contacted and the scoreboard Hinding has a contract, but the approved vendor or manufacturer, Everstand, is not an approved vendor for a sign. So, there was deficiencies in- in that process and asked the state to, you know, how- what the remedy is, other than to put a note in their file. So, do I think- do I think Hinding was truthful? No, not fully. And do I think the council has an opportunity to do something about it in terms of any future awards to Hinding? Sure, in terms of recommendation. As the second part of it, in terms of the permitting process, missing, not permitted, was not done, right, before they put the sign in. Can we correct that and remedy that? Yes. Tom Cowell is remedying that situation as we speak. And in fact, wrapping that- that up in terms of requiring Hinding to come in, pull the permits, review, submit the design plans, all of the specifications, engineering, so for- for public safety, digging, may the company dig up the footings today to go and inspect those footings and to make sure that everything is- is done according to the engineering- and to make sure that everything is, is, is done according to, uh, the engineering specs.
Can you keep us updated as to what the findings are there?
Yeah, I think he's going to, Tom has pretty much signed off, uh, that everything is, you know, the steel is the right size.
The footings are the proper depth.
The right depth, right, the, right down to the sale of the, I mean, the, or the port, the, the batch of concrete, whatever the, the detail shows. And so Tom is in to, to fix that and remedy that. My recommendation going forward, absolutely, you know, would be certainly, we don't have any situation in which, uh, the town or school is allowed to, to pull the permit on a, on a private third-party company. That company is to follow the rules and pull the permit. Simple as that. Uh, so I, you know, I think there, you know, so few other recommendations in here in terms of purchasing and, and so forth, but, um, you know, I can continue to go on, you know, point by point, but I'm not sure where, where your concerns are. I'm, you know, I'm, I'm open-minded to say that wherever we see, um, merit with some of these and improve our situation internally with policies and procedures, I'm all for that. And, uh, again, that's why I've come up with some recommendations to try and tighten up and look at our, uh, purchasing and procedures and, and provide recommendations and anything else that you want to look at.
So, going back to the sign for the Board of Ed, because this obviously was initiated by the Board of Education, not on the town side. And it's not the first time that we have talked to the Board of Ed about pulling permits, whether it's them or the company they contracted with. So how do we prevent that on the Board of Ed? Because it seems like no matter how many conversations we have, it's still not effective with them. So what, what is our, what can we do as a council to prevent those types of things from happening? Because we don't have jurisdiction over the Board of Ed and their funds.
Right, right, and I, I just think communication and sending direct, putting it on paper, sending, you know, if you want to direct me to, to send that to the superintendent or, and you want to take this up in the, uh, subcommunic, you know, communications subcommittee? Yeah, I don't, you know, and hopefully, you know, the messages that we.
So we put it in writing, but what, what, it, it has no teeth to it because they, you know, this is not the first time, like I said. And we've talked about it with them before, so putting it in writing does what? Just, it makes us go back and say, we've already told you this? We, do we, do we have any recourse? I guess.
How do towns have, how have towns created a one finance department that encompasses the Board of Education and the town? So you don't get these problems. What do we have to do to do that?
I don't know, I mean.
Yeah, Madison's had it for thirty years.
Yeah.
And actually, what they did when they did it.
I mean, is it a charter change? Is it a, you know, a regulation change? A sweep of the town council's hand?
I mean, we'd have to get the, apparently, uh, we'd probably have to get the Board of Ed to agree to it. Because what Madison did was they fired their finance director and they fired their business manager and they created one job. And actually, the business manager got the job when they did it. And I know this for a fact because it was my sister-in-law. And she did it for thirty years, so. What they did is you had one big finance department for the town, you know, so it was a little bigger. I think it was actually, it was the Town of Madison, which is a bigger town, bigger school system. And it was, you know, her as the director and, uh, four or five people in the office. But they did the school and the town.
I mean, certainly it would clear up a lot of discrepancies and.
Yeah.
Rose, I, you know, I, I don't have a answer for you right now, but maybe, you know, fines, penalties, I, you know, I don't know.
How, how can we fine or assess a penalty against the Board of Ed? Right.
We have no jurisdiction over this.
Yeah, but there has, there has to be a way to gain control. There has to be.
I'm just looking for.
Any recommendations from the.
We're going to be talking about that at the next meeting.
Town attorney, but is there any recourse that the.
I'm thinking, I haven't come up with something yet.
Okay, so maybe at the, between now and the next council meeting, you can keep thinking about it and maybe you have a suggestion to us.
I certainly would give a thought. So how was that scoreboard, how was it bid? I mean, did it go to bid or was it just given as a state contract? So how many times do we have to prove to them? You know, every time we've called them out on it and made them go to bid, instead of it, you know, it comes in less money. Every time. You know, the state bid is for an emergency.
But Al, it's easier.
You're exactly right.
It's easier.
It's the lazy personnel. Hey, we'll just use the state bid because it's not my money. And it's a lot easier than going, doing a bid process. And, and, and that state bid is for an emergency situation and it's, this town is doing it across the board.
Remember the carpet? The carpet's a perfect example of it.
Yeah, there's issues on the town side though, too, with going just to state contract.
I guess so, um, like the thirty-one thousand, one ninety-two, is that still?
For the fire hose. Did that all go back into, what happens?
That never got out of the.
No, no, no.
No, 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 but.
They can't touch that.
It's going to lapse, essentially.
Right, because it was last fiscal year.
Last fiscal year.
And it was out of contingency, so then it goes into the general fund, it goes back to the general fund, whatever's left in contingency. Is that it?
Right.
Right.
So.
So that would be the budget item next year.
To buy a police car.
To buy what?
Police car.
I thought we still needed to buy hoses at some point.
Yeah, I mean, that didn't go away.
No, but neither did, a police car just blew a motor.
Don't even get me started on that.
So, I mean, you know, you could, we could look at that.
No, I'm not looking at that.
I didn't hear much.
I'm not looking at that.
You're not looking?
No, I'm not looking at that. They have plenty of cars.
Okay.
So, so what's our?
What about the rest of it?
Yeah. What are we doing with these FOI, all of these things? Are we going to continue it to the next agenda?
It's going to be a long agenda.
To, because there's more FOI things that we've requested information on?
And we still probably haven't received all the FOIs or results of FOI. Are there any other that you're working on now, Mike?
Uh, another one came in today, yes.
Okay.
I understand something. A citizen can request information and we're obligated, if it's public documentation, to make it available. That doesn't automatically trigger the need for this council to review or act on that. So let's not mix apples and oranges here. Public information is one thing. Forcing the town council to act on that request for information because the citizen feels they uncovered something is not a requirement. So when we say we're going to go through every one of these, I think we've got an obligation to the town to read this information, but that does not mean we have to debate and dwell in angst over this endlessly.
You're right, Joe, but we have, we have the duty to look and make sure that the policies and procedures are followed by either the Board of Education or the town. And, you know, as, as we see here, they did some stuff that wasn't proper. So that's what we're going to have to try to correct or straighten out or.
Agree.
Make something happen that it doesn't happen again. I guess we could talk about it in September.
Going to be a long September meeting.
All right, next item is citizen statements and petitions.
I'm up here again, in reference to the scoreboard sign that Mike just addressed. The scoreboard sign was bid, wasn't even bid, it was given directly to Hinding's sign. It wasn't approved, I brought it to their attention before they installed it. Wasn't inspected, it was put in Friday, Saturday, and then Sunday. They dug concrete tubes, they poured it, they wrecked the field that the town, um, Public Works just did. I made it aware before they started to the town manager. The Everstand sign that they installed is not even an approved sign by the state of Connecticut. We don't even know if the wind shear loads are proper. We have no idea if it's stable enough, it requires eight-by-eight steel, there's only eight-by-five tubes. I was there today, I'm FOI-ing the videos to make sure that the machine was there. There's no tracks, there's no hand digging to go down six feet to see if the sonnet tubes were done today. Tom Caldwell inspected it according to his chart this morning. Nobody was out there with a machine all day long. I verified there's no tracks, was never even dug up. Just the top of it was excavated. So that all being said, there was no permits pulled, it's not an approved sign. The, um, thirteen PSX zero-three-four-one contract specifically dates resigned. And Joe Fawnin, you cut me off at that meeting when I presented it, that we could have had the argument and Reed Diamond was present, Dan Arman was present, George Miller was present, Rose Angeloni and Anthony. Rose brought it up, Anthony brought it up that we should listen to it, and Joe, you cut me off. That's public safety stuff. There's a sign there where kids being played and you don't want to talk about it. It was improperly done, seventeen thousand, five hundred dollars given to somebody when the last sign we put up was sixty-two hundred dollars. Don't you want to know where our tax money goes, Joe? You don't have an answer for that one, I know.
Well, I've got an answer for you, sir.
Go ahead.
My answer, quite frankly, is, I remember about five or six years ago, you came here with complaints about the police department, specifically about the chief of police. And at the time, there was an issue, some sort of an issue between you and the chief of police.
Actually, you're actually wrong about that, but it was between mine and a family member, but go ahead, keep going.
And now there's an issue between you and the superintendent of schools.
No, that's not true.
Because it was an accident involving your son. I'm genuinely sorry that your son was involved in an accident. I genuinely hope the young man is okay.
Well, let's get into that, real, let me cut you quick, real sure.
You told me I didn't have an answer, I'm giving you my answer.
Okay, go ahead, I want to hear it.
So there was an episode between a family member and superintendent of schools.
Correct.
You were not satisfied with the emergency response from the fire department. So now there's an issue between you and the fire department.
Were you, did you see the video? Wait a minute, Joe, did you see the video of my son laying there? I asked you a question, did you see the video?
I'm not finished talking.
I don't even want to hear you.
I'm done.
I don't even want to hear you, you never even saw the video.
Let's keep it civil, let's keep it civil.
Joe, you never saw the video. They didn't even respond to my son. I had to pick him up on a corner of Darrell Farms with a concussion bleeding and you want to sit there and you want to address me? And I'm finding, finding is a protocol? Protocol not being followed. Protocol is not being followed, money's being spent, and there's an audit that is done that you were part of the town council and the meeting that's in my hand, that shows all my findings. He has it, he read it, and so do some council members. That will be released.
Go right ahead.
I don't have a problem, but let me ask you a question. Did you read the audit? You saw the audit, you were part of it, it shows protocol, spending. Everything I've been FOI-ing not being followed. I'm trying to save the taxpayers' money and you want to give me something about what happened to my son? You are in no position to talk like that. I went in a meeting and it, over a sign, and you cut me sure of a guy that put in a sign, didn't follow protocol, and the superintendent lies right to your face and got three bids and there was no bids, Joe. Your Democratic Party got to get on board and stop this spending. She made fun of me and said, here's the FOI king, and then apologized six times. You really want to talk about things? That's how you present yourself as professionals?
What I want, what I want to stop is your personal vendettas coming before this council.
It's not a vendetta, it's fact, it's fact, it's fact. Show me one thing and they're.
To get revenge against town officials. That's what's going on here.
Prove to me right now with all the facts and FOIs that I didn't just prove. You're, he just admitted that he has to change his policies. And who's, who's vindictive? He's got to change his policies and procedures, did you not hear that? So if I'm being vindictive, how did he come up with the scenarios? Then a superintendent just took a, a, an unpaid vacation? That's never been done in our history. And nobody cares that somebody wrote a check out for thirty bucks?
We care.
Well, it doesn't sum it.
It's got to be, it's got to be investigated. We're not going to take an allegation without looking into it, without.
Well, it proved to me and I'll stop some of these FOIs. Get on board and stop this. These taxpayers don't have the money.
It's going to be a topic of discussion at this Thursday's Board of Education meeting.
Well, then, let's find out.
We will find out. It's a, it's a public meeting.
Any other citizen statements and petitions?
Um, Mike, I just have one quick.
Yeah.
I just want to thank everyone on the council for the flowers they sent to Frank Mentone. And he sent a thank you note to the entire council, um, who knows, sister passed away. Thank you.
All right, moving to executive session. Connecticut General Statutes one dash two-hundred-six, C, deployment of security devices, cameras at town hall.
Uh, who do we have to have included in that, Mike?
Tom Manager and Dennis Pennell.
Dennis Pennell, the IT coordinator to support the fire team.